...invisible with liberty and justice.
We get to start with a nice ceremony tonight. When you only have 22 police officers, you don't get to do this too often. So it's always an exciting evening, and it's a very important evening because, again, when you only have 22 officers, one additional officer can be a big change in culture and all those things. So we hope that Jessica fits all those things. Everything we've heard has been positive. We're very excited to have her come join us. She joins us from the city of Mount Vernon, where she's been since August of 2014, I believe. Grew up in Florida originally, is that right? So she's up here in the cold now with us. But we're very excited to have her joining us, and it's an honor to swear her in tonight. So without further ado.
Let's do a resolution first.
Oh, we'll do the resolutions. We'll get the business out of the way. In case anyone objects. Resolve to appoint Jessica Huff to position of police officer grade five at an annual salary of $56,133, effective January 5, 2017, subject to completion of probationary period of not less than 12 weeks and not more than 52 weeks. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you're in. And she's ready? Yeah. Come on up here. I'll have this here so you can read along instead of just repeating them. I state your name.
I, Jessica Huff.
Of the village of Orkney, county of Westchester, state of New York.
Of the village of Orkney, county of Westchester, state of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of the police officer.
The duties of the office of the police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome. Ceremony ending?
Yes.
Ceremonial handover. Boy scared of stabbing someone, which is really embarrassing. Then I'll do over this in the mayor's school. So we'll just maybe take a ceremonial picture with you. You should number eight, 252. Hopefully it's lucky and safe. And look at you, Paul. Hang on for a minute. Okay, go ahead. Paul, his camera's bigger than yours. It's not about the size, I use Paul. Maybe I should sit in front of you. Goodness. We came up to you.
Thank you very much.
Shoulder patch.
Shoulder patch. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice meeting you. Time to meet you. Thought they were here for the checks over $25,000. Couple of quick announcements. First, Happy New Year. Give everybody before they leave. Seems like we had a safe, pretty snow-free holiday period, so that's always good. So we're happy to be here in 2017. Hopefully it's a great year for the village and for everyone that lives there. First, the formal announcement is we have a check over $25,000, which was for O'Connor-Davies, which is for the annual audit. It's the same price as last year. Last year we split into two checks.
Two checks, I think it would have been a little bit more combined. We had a new contract with them, and they combined, must be combined all the time.
Okay.
They didn't have to come back.
Very good.
It was split in two checks last time.
I think it was two checks last time. That's why it was under our contract limit, but it's the same price. And then Janice had a announcement about the...
Yes, there has been some concern about the upcoming gun show at the Westchester County Center. And while this board has agreed we're not taking a specific position, we do want the public to be aware that there's a committee of legislators meeting on Monday, January 9th, at 7:00 p.m. to consider legislation reinstating the ban on gun shows at the county center. And that's at the county office building, 148 Martin Avenue, 8th floor, again, 7:00 p.m., but it is suggested that if you want to be on the roof to speak, get through it.
There was an announcement from Mary Jane Shimskey. I think a lot of people get the emails from her, and if somebody wanted that in another form than what Janice just said, this is the information here.
Any other announcements?
I'm just reminding people, start of a new year, let's try to drive safely and watch out for pedestrians. All sorts of materials, posters, bumper stickers, handouts, whatever, are available in Village Hall up in the lobby.
Mark, anybody else? Otherwise we'll move on to correspondence, of which there was none. And then move on to public comments. Any public comment? Try to speak in the mic. Please, have a great, thank you.
My name is Bill Fitzgerald. I'm the owner of 130 Main Street. We are trying to do a renovation to the property. It's being held up because of the definition of demolition. The building is, I'm sorry, initially we went to the planning board. Planning board on September 7th said that we had to go in front of the ARB for approval because there's, therefore the demolition requires ARB approval. We've gone in front of the ARB board three times so far, also on Monday, this upcoming Monday, January 9th, we're going back to the ARB board. So far, they've refused to take a vote up or down, and I'm just requesting that they either vote it up or down for the purpose of the demolition, so we can move forward. At this point, I've already gone through what the budget was for the architectural fees so far, so it's becoming a financial burden, a time burden. I'm trying to move my family back into the building with the renovation. If the ARB doesn't approve of the plan, I can understand that, but they have to vote. It's a demolition, I don't, you're the attorney. So I, I'm not a lawyer, but the way I read it, I don't agree that it's a demolition, but by the definition of the demolition, or how the law is written, it is considered a demolition. And, you know, I know I only have three minutes, but I would like them to vote on it, and that's my position.
Do we know why they haven't voted one way or the other?
Mark was at the last meeting.
Well... Could I interject to you?
Yes, sure.
There's a lawyer on the board, the ARB board, and she says, the way she reads it, it's not a demolition. I have...
Just so you know, after that meeting, I was contacted, and I was contacted and advised, in fact, it was a demolition. And...
And it was a demolition?
It does fit the definition of demolition, but it wasn't until after the last meeting that anybody came to me at that point.
I don't disagree with that.
No, no, no.
But this is two days short of four months now. And if you start adding up the cost, the financial and the time.
Right.
I think it's a burden on me. We've owned the building, when we bought the building, there was a fire, there was a hole in the roof. I mean, that, I don't know if anybody remembers the building before it was redone when we first bought it. It was a disaster. We're survived, we're surrounded by a house that hasn't seen paint in 40 years, and the apartment building hasn't been repainted ever, I don't think. I don't think that I'm creating an eyesore. And, you know, the way I look at it, I don't want an adversarial relationship. I've been here for 25 years. We're moving back into the neighborhood. We want the house to be nice, but the way I look at it, I'm either paying an architect or a lawyer. So, you know, make up your mind, not your minds, but somebody has to vote either up or down on this, and let us move on. That's my position. So...
Can I just interject a second? The, I suggest, Mayor, that we don't go through all of the past history of this, because there is a long history of it, and I certainly am well aware of the case. I've taken steps to make sure that the ARB chairman is aware that there needs to be a vote on the matter. Obviously, I'm not going to talk to him about this way to vote. I personally don't have an interest in that, but I need to get them to get to a vote. So I've explained the various legal aspects after talking with Mary Ann about some of it. We know that you've taken steps to get back to the ARB with the proper information there, and I fully would expect them to vote on it.
I think, I mean, you know, there's more than we can... We don't know that, I don't know, we don't know the details of all this, but I think what we could do is, I can reach out to the chair and say, is there anything you need to be able to vote on Monday? And if there is, then we figure it out tomorrow, on Friday, so they can, they can vote Monday one way or the other.
That's fine, but I mean, all the legal notices have been in the paper, everything's done.
Sure. So I'll follow up tomorrow.
I'll be available once I need to.
I'll copy you on it, so if they have legal questions or whatever it is, they can do that, they can hash it out before Monday, so they can vote one way or the other.
That's fair. I just wanted to move on.
I mean, the second part might be, you know, looking at our definition of demolition, if we need to do something with that, but that's for another day.
That's not it.
We're not going to have that done for around Monday.
I understand.
So I will, I'll personally follow up with him tomorrow. Correct?
I don't know if this helps you at all, but Deb Hargrave is, and I know that...
Hi, hurry up.
I'm good. Deb is coming shortly, so I'm going to put my phone to text her. I don't know if you want to wait, because I know that Mary Ann, I don't know if it'll help, but that was the discussion.
Yeah, you can talk anyway. But at this point, honestly...
It's not going to help her.
It's tough.
Okay. I saw all the emails going back and forth, so I know she's really, well, she's the one who's, obviously because of the legal issues, she talked to Ms. Hargrave.
Okay. So, but that's, all the information has gotten to the chairman, and the chairman is well aware of where the ARB should be positioned in this whole thing, in terms of rolling one way or another. So that's it. That's where we, that's all we have.
I was just sure they had all the information that you interrupted. I'm going to listen, if that's okay? Sure. Stay as long as you like. Stay as long as you like. So I'm waiting for any other public comment?
It doesn't sound like it's going to help at all.
Do you want me to wait?
She's not coming here for that.
For that. She's coming for something different.
Oh, no, okay.
We're not, we're not having a discussion about an ARB case here.
Okay, that's fine. She's just going to happen to be here, so you might run into her on the way out, but I will follow up with Chairman Rizzoli.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Next up is the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on this?
Take your time. I'll also make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wait for everybody's second.
Nothing significant.
Okay. You can pass what you want, pass what you want. If you have to.
You have a minute?
Yeah, there's a couple words, the spell corrector didn't catch. I thought it was one like, maybe this fee versus feel, or feel, you know. I can't remember what they were.
I will make a, make a motion to open a public hearing, consider local law pending the code with respect to solar energy equipment. Can I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open.
I think it would be helpful for Mary Ann to run through the draft law and guidelines.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's two parts to this, the local law, which you're having the public hearing on, but the local law refers to guidelines, they don't need a public hearing, right? They should be part of the public hearing. The board will vote on both of them, both of them today, the local law and the guidelines. And the local law amends against several sections of the code, the ARB chapter of the code and the zoning code. Okay, the first change is to the ARB chapter of the code, and it specifies that an application for a building permit for solar energy equipment has to be approved by the ARB. That is, in fact, the current practice, is in fact in the current law, because it's included in the general language, but this specifies, because we do specify some things like wall, fence, signs, this specifies solar energy equipment. So it's not a change in the law, but it clarified. It's a change in the law, but it's not a substantive change, it's just a clarification. Okay? The second sentence is a new provision to the ARB chapter, and it's that any application for a building for, for the ARB for solar energy equipment has to be noticed. Not noticed in the newspaper, but it has to be, notice has to be given to all adjacent property owners. And adjacent is defined as anybody who shares a property line or is across the street from the subject property. Right now, there doesn't need to be notice for ARB applications. Other applications, but this one there doesn't. Okay. Then the third change is on the rules of the ARB, that the ARB in reviewing building permits for solar energy equipment, so follow the solar energy equipment guidelines adopted by the Board of Trustees, and not apply its usual standards of review. Those are substituted by the solar energy guidelines. Then the next change is to the definition of building. The term "building" in the code is much wider than actually the word "building." It's like any assembly of materials on the ground, so includes some things you wouldn't think of as buildings, like fences and stuff. And it gives some examples, it says including these, and we're also including solar energy equipment. Then the, the change to section five and seven are to specify that in the residential districts, solar energy equipment is a permitted use, provided it's used only to provide power for use by the owners less these tenants of the building. And then the same changes made to the use regulations for the business district and rental district and the recreation district. So those are all the pieces of the amendments to the code. Then the solar energy equipment guidelines, I'll read the statement of purpose, because I think it informs a lot of it, because it's in the public interest to provide for and encourage renewable energy sources, energy systems and a sustainable quality of life. The purpose of these guidelines is to facilitate the development and operation of renewable energy systems based on sunlight. These guidelines are intended to balance the desirability and demand for alternative energy systems with maintaining the aesthetics of the village to minimize potential for any negative impact by these systems and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. And then it says that the ARB is to follow these guidelines. There's some definitions which we don't need to go through, but I will read the guidelines. First, our measures should be taken to avoid and mitigate any clearance to neighboring residential property or public rights of way. Equipment shall be installed and screened in a manner, in a manner that minimizes its visibility from surrounding properties and public rights of way, while maintaining viability and functional integrity to the greatest extent practicable. Solar energy equipment shall use materials, colors, and textures designed to blend with the structure to which it's affixed. Solar energy equipment may be mounted on a building or any section of the roof of a building, provided it meets the following guidelines. On a pitched roof facing a street or public way, the equipment must be mounted flush with the plane of the system, parallel with the roof surface, and shall be mounted as close to the roof surface as possible, but in no event may it be mounted more than six inches above the roof surface. And that's only the rule for facing the street. For the other sides, on a pitched roof, the highest point of the equipment at full extension shall not extend beyond the highest point of the roof to which it's capped and not be set back at least three feet from the roof edge, from the roof edge in the ridge line. On a flat roof, it can't extend above any corners or parapet, where there is no source of parapet, it has to be set back on the roof edges four feet for each foot of solar energy system height. They should be consolidated to one area on the roof to the greatest extent possible and shall not be scattered in multiple groups on the roof. The equipment shall be installed so as to appear regular in shape and arranged in a pattern that conforms with the general shape and configuration of the roof upon which it's mounted, and shall not damage or obscure character-defining features such as dormers, chimney, roof lines. When the arrangement of equipment is broken up by a building feature, the equipment shall be arranged symmetrically. This was a small change from the last version, the version that we read last time, because one resident made the point, it said it had to match the general shape of the roof, and it might not make sense that it has to match exactly, so that was sought and to conform with suggestion, and it was incorporated. Okay. Now, so that's it for being on the roof. The maximum extent possible of solar energy equipment, other than the collectors, shall be located within the house or on the side of the rear porch. For freestanding, ground-mounted solar energy equipment, it has to be located in the side of the rear yard and comply with all setback requirements for a principal building. At full extension, it can't be six and a half feet, more than six and a half feet high above the ground, as measured by its port and equipment. It has to be fully screened from adjacent properties by fencing or a combination of evergreens and plantings, which will be at least six and a half feet in height, or through the use of architectural features or screenings that will characterize, harmonize the character of the surrounding area. And then exterior electrical lines must be buried below the surface of the ground. That's it.
To kind of, I mean, I think, to start back on what we're trying to accomplish here, I think we were trying to figure out from when we started this whole project, was to figure out the balance between allowing any kind of solar projects and allowing no solar projects, because it'll change the character of our neighborhood. I think as a board, we, we had to first figure out where we were on that spectrum, and then try to draft legislation to get us as close to that, as far on the spectrum as possible. I think that, you know, it definitely took a lot of discussion to kind of figure out where we were on that spectrum, and I think it was probably four of us come down kind of on the allow, allow, you know, allowing more solar than not allowing it. Connie definitely is much more in protecting the character of the neighborhood, so you can't see the solar. You know, and I think we definitely were, I'd say, over the middle, closer towards allowing more solar, not all the way, allowing anything they want. But I think, we also got a letter from Chairman of the ARB, Rick Rizzolo, today, suggesting that if this legislation goes through to remove the review of the ARB completely and just allow it to be a building department type of, you know, application. I disagree with that, because I think there are a lot of things in the guidelines that have the, you know, have leeway and have things that can be approved. I mean, I think it's similar to, you know, putting in windows. You know, obviously you can't ever put windows in, but you can make them look, you know, as good as possible. You know, there's, I was just kind of circling some of the guidelines as we went through, where I thought, you know, the architecture review board would do nothing, Ed would have a great eye, you know, to make the, you know, minimizing the visibility from surrounding properties and public rights of way by maintaining, you know, visibility and functional integrity. I mean, that one alone, to me, is, you know, probably strong enough to have the ARB's, you know, input. I don't think this is going to be, I never envisioned this as a rubber stamp, and if it is, you know, then I think we probably have to change the legislation, because I think that we had kind of gone the other way, where it was almost, if you can see it, you can't put it in, in my opinion. You know, except it was, you know, again, rear-facing, you didn't have any neighbors, you couldn't really get any solar energy equipment. So I think that that's why we had to kind of provide the guidance from, from the Board of Trustees, but I still think, you know, it would play a very significant role in maximizing the appearance of them. You know, I think one other thing that we talked about a lot was that these are going to be changing constantly, and, you know, while we were talking about this, we had, you know, some, we saw a couple samples from, you know, manufacturers that you couldn't tell it from a different roof. We had Tesla come out very publicly and say, we're going to make a better roof the way we made it in a car. You know, so I think a lot of this is not going to be, in a year or two, I mean, if Tesla says they're going to start delivering them in the next month or six weeks, so a lot of this might be moved, especially with the, you know, something like with the, to the greatest extent practicable, solar energy equipment shall use materials, colors, and textures designed to blend in with the structure twice it's affixed. To me, that says, you know, you might not be able to get the cheapest thing, but you're going to have to, you know, get something that actually looks good. And I think that that's not something we're opposed to as a board. We just want to be able to allow solar, and if it does get pushed back and the technology is delayed five years, we don't want everyone waiting five years to be getting, you know, some of the solar equipment, you know, and if it is, you know, as Tesla says, it's going to be a better roof, forget the fact that it's solar, you know, that's great. But I think that that's something that, you know, in 10 years, you're going to be like, you know, I can't believe we're debating this, because you can't even tell the difference anymore. But for now, I think this is kind of an important legislation that we've obviously worked a long time on.
Just want to mention that his service, he also chimed in, but not with a response, but more of, they haven't had their governance, whatever, their monthly meeting yet, so they don't have the time to respond to it. So how do we feel about that?
I'm kind of torn, frankly, because in some ways, you know, this has been going on for nine months or so, you know, so they have to have about a meeting or two, maybe they thought we're going to do something different in the historic district. I'm not really sure, but on the second half, you know, on the other hand, I should say, on the second half, on the other hand, you know, I'm in no super rush to put this through. You know, I think the part where, you know, we felt kind of the least, I should speak for myself, I felt the least confident to saying, you know, kind of solar at all costs, not quite that strong, but, you know, leaning towards solar was in the historic district, where, you know, and I think we were, we wanted to make sure that, we said, you know, you're not going to block historic features and things like that, but, you know, I think that's the part where this is, if at all problematic, that's where it'd be problematic for me. So, you know, I'm not in a super rush, but, you know, I'm hoping to hear what you guys think about that.
What did they chime in? Yesterday? You not got a, you didn't get a copy of that? Let me see if I have it on my phone.
You can do it, Larry.
This Friday? Yesterday? Larry, you want it? Who else wants it?
We all, it was for all of us.
The board got it.
You know, I feel as, only because I'm trying to complete file on it.
You want a copy? Okay. Sorry.
I didn't check the CCs on it.
Do you want me to forward it to Larry? Do you have it now?
Yeah, well, now...
I didn't pull it up from Mary Ann. I don't need it right now.
No, I just sent it to Larry and Mary Ann.
I mean, at this board, I've obviously spoken about it for a long time, so I don't expect us to have a lot of comments on it tonight.
I want to just...
Let me just echo what you said about, I certainly don't want any group within the community to be excluded from this discussion, or we're given an opportunity, but this has been going on for months, this meeting, this public hearing, this notice, and we're not talking about 40-page legislation that needs tremendous time to review. So, you know, I would hesitate to say, never mind, we're just going to forge ahead tonight, but I think we need to bring this to a resolution sooner, rather than letting it go on, you know, generously, if another group decides they haven't had their full opportunity to say.
Good.
Well, what's the, I mean, I'm going to just say, you know, the issue would be, what is the issue if we wait till the next regular meeting and give them a chance to meet and come back to us?
Yeah, I don't see what you're downset it, really. I mean, if they want it, they'll push off its way.
No, 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 I'm not saying that, but it's a problem with notification if we wait.
We just keep the public hearing open, right?
Yeah, why not?
I believe we should keep the public hearing open, at least till another meeting.
Yeah, and I think, I think Rick Rizzolo wanted to be here as well. You know, I know he sent a note, but I think, you know, he's been here pretty much all the meetings, so. Not that recently, we need to hold it up, but... So, has anyone else on the board had comments, or is it going to open up to the public?
Well, I did have one thought. I might throw this out, and, you know, I know it's going to be unpopular, but I was wondering about the notion of, we still have this little bit, I still have this little bit of concern about it, you know. We said, we saw a picture that Rick supplied about insulation in Dobbs Ferry that was fairly difficult to find acceptable, although it fits all, probably all of our guidelines. But what about if there was, I don't even know how to word this, but some sort of like a circuit breaker that said if there was someone that came in specifically, based on the noticing, that came in and said, a neighbor, not just a random person, but a neighbor that said, you know what, we really have a concern about the impact on the, you know, the neighborhoods visually. What about if at that point, there was a circuit breaker kicks in, more or less, that says, okay, now you can actually expand your criteria to look at whether it's an unduly negative influence on the character of the immediate neighborhood. negative influence on the character of the immediate neighborhood. Only if someone comes in and complains directly, you know, that was a neighbor that said, oh my God, this is going to X, Y, Z. Because otherwise, they don't seem to have much leverage to, they can't stop it. They can try to make it look as good as possible by they, I mean, the ARB's set of criteria, they can try to push it one way or the other. But I'm just, that's my only hesitation. In the, in the, we're looking at the interim, probably, I keep trying to argue to myself and I argue to other people that when you look at things like the historical district, there's very few, you'd have to have, basically, almost any house on the side street would not be able to probably acquire, and if they're on the side streets, the arrays aren't going to be facing the street. So it's really, we're talking really about the north side of Main Street, it's the main historical district.
It's on a Main Street property, yeah.
Yeah. And a lot of those buildings are actually, you know, have parapets, they're flat-roofed or whatever, there's not that many. Obviously, there's a couple like, you know, closer to Broadway that are old-fashioned-y houses, you know, with angle bricks. So I keep trying to come back to arguing that, you know what, they can't be that much of an impact, and then wondering, but are we missing something and do we need to have a circuit breaker just in case? So I just wanted to throw that out, and I'm not going to get behind it like, you know, do a full Don Quixote behind it, but it's something I was thinking about, and would that be a safety valve that would be, provide a little bit of equity to the neighborhood?
Well, it's a difference, though, I think, between a safety valve and a veto valve. So I would not be comfortable where any neighbor who doesn't like it, for whatever reasons, is, I don't want to have to look at this, can just absolutely veto it.
That's not, that wouldn't be their decision, what would happen, then the ARB, the way I was envisioning, then the ARB would say, you know what, then let us consider the character of any of an argument, but it wouldn't be an outright veto, it would be.
Sounds like once we take them on the scale, it would subvert the whole purpose of this.
But you understand what I'm trying to get at?
I do. And this is not, this is what we've been wrestling with, I do.
Maybe it's three-quarters of the noticed people, you know, like it's.
At that point, you know, right.
To me, with one neighbor saying, you know, if I say I'm going to put up a bush, I'm sure we noticed people that somewhere, you know, didn't like the bush, but.
I understand that. I just am trying to think about what, you know, and you don't want to have to make them have, you know, an online petition with 200 signatures either. So, you know, it's like, there's got to be, is there balance, if there's no way to really come, I can't see where, that's my problem with it, I don't really see where, what the trigger balance is. I could see the reason for it, the rationale to say, you know what, maybe we should consider this stuff, but I don't know how to balance that trigger point. Because I agree with you, John, you just can't have one disgruntled neighbor come in and shoot down all the works, so.
I think it certainly bears looking at and talking about again, but we have talked about all of these things, we're clearly not unanimous on it, and there is a range of opinions, and even where we settle down perhaps isn't as further than some of us might have liked, not as far, as far as others would have liked it. This seems to me to be the balance we got to, and if something doesn't work, we can always change it, right? But I think we need to, this is what we came up with, and I think it deserves a shot.
I'm a little late to the, you know, all of the discussion that went on to this, but from the time I've been here and listening, you know, I think Mary Ann's statement of purpose really was the point, that we want to facilitate the development and operation of renewable energy, and that we want to balance the desirability and demand for alternative energy systems, which we've all agreed that we want to have while maintaining aesthetics. And we talked about this at the last few meetings I've been here, and I think we came to an agreement that we're going to lean more towards the desirability and demand for alternative energy systems. I'm not averse to leaving this open to hear from the Historical Society, I'm feeling that they're not going to be happy, and we've discussed this already. We have Rick Rizzulo's letter, he may not be all that happy either. I'm not sure anything, any of that's going to really change the way I feel about this, but I'm perfectly happy to keep this open for another cycle of meetings.
And you certainly have no great rocks, you know, if you have the applications pending, and we got to push this through, you know, I would like to hear from the Historic District, Historic Committee, but, you know, it's unfortunate that it's taken this long to hear from them, but, you know, it's, again, a super rush, so. We should open it up to.
Well, let me just comment on Mark's thought about the issue of how to deal with this wonderful section that now allows neighbors to know. This is a great addition to have notice, I think. And there is something that seems a little disjointed to me to encourage people to come in and then not have any sense that an argument that's made rationally to five volunteers who were sitting there as ARB members, that their point of view really about character couldn't be considered. I mean, you can mitigate the visual, but you can't use, the ARB can't go back and use what it normally uses as a criteria for decisions. So, you know, if, you know, Mark, you said, I don't know how you'd say it, if that were something we wanted to do, the saying of it, the figuring out the language is what Mary Ann is so good at, so.
I'm good at figuring out language, but you're not on the same page.
I know, exactly, that's what I'm saying. I said, if we agree.
You're reading from two sheets and using up there.
Right. So what I'm saying is that right now, what I'm, what I'm hearing Mark say is that there's, there's some concern about that part. I obviously have concern about that part. If it happened that a majority of us had concern about that part, I don't think we would have to do the draft of the language, it would be your job to figure that out. So I'm just expanding on Mark's point here and saying, I've had the same concern, and I've walked up and down Main Street now about 20 times looking at those buildings, and when you get up near Broadway, near the Historical Society, obviously part of the gateway of the village, there are several houses there that would have a visual, if, when I saw the picture that Rick Rizzulo sent from Ashford Avenue, I think.
You haven't seen the house, every time you drive down.
I don't, I don't really go that, I don't even drive anywhere anymore, I just stay in town, but.
Very busy, yeah.
Yes, I am. And walking, we're trying to make this a walkable community. I suggest you all retire. But I try to picture those two white buildings that are right up from Houlihan Lawrence and picture them with that kind of look. So, you know, I'd hate to have anybody headline this as, you know, Connie's Against Solar. I'm not. But I, I know the word balance is important, I know we've talked about balance, I personally think we haven't got it exactly right, and that's what a public hearing is for. So I don't, I think discussing it and hearing, I think now is when people actually do pay attention, this is what happens, when finally there's a public hearing on an issue, people who've been somewhat mildly aware, sometimes rally and say, you know what, I have a point of view on this. So when our democratic system works, people respond to us at the public hearings and it helps us make a decision. So I don't mind continuing to talk about this and hearing more points of view.
What a great segue. Anyone for the public to speak? Yeah, Wes, that's Anna's up first.
Yes, hi, Jen Hargraves, I'm a resident in Washington Avenue, I'm also a member of the ARB. As you indicated earlier, Rick Rizzulo, who's Chair of the ARB, couldn't be here, I know he sent in a letter, but both Gail, who's also a member of the ARB, and myself are here to emphasize a few points that we've already submitted in writing. My particular concern, and Gail's going to touch on another note, is what has now been raised by Mark and Connie. I understand that the law as it's written seems to suggest that the ARB would have some input, but the truth of the matter is, unlike anything else that comes before us, we can't deny solar panels the way it's written. We may be able to make the color look a little better, we may be able to make the array look a little bit better, but unlike a window, we can't say no to the solar panel. And what concerns us is that also what's written in the guidelines, which I think is a very good thing, is that we have a notice requirement. So our concern is that if we have residents that show up and they've been noticed about solar panels on a home that's next door or across the street, and we may have one or we may have the whole block, we really can't deny the solar panel the way it's written. There is no safety clause, there's no, there's no way we can say no, go back or put it in a different location, we really have to say yes. So I agree with what's been suggested tonight, and in fact, that's why I showed up, is that really, I would like to see something written in the law that while we emphasize the importance of solar energy, while we support solar panels, while we, you give us what we really didn't have before, which is this village's concern and understanding and really need for solar energy. Because really, before that, when the solar panels came before us, we were balancing lots of things, all weighing them similarly. I think now we understand what you want and what the village wants, but I still feel that we need at least the ability to say no, if in fact, that's what we're hearing objections to from residents. But the way I read it, that's not, that's not, we don't have that opportunity now.
Well, I was just catching Mary Ann's, I hear, I think the whole point of the guidelines is if somebody comes with a proposal for solar panels and they, they don't meet these guidelines, they.
But there's really, but I mean, what I'm suggesting is that, and again, I wrote a few, I wrote a few questions and got some answers back, so I'm just going by what I understand, you can tell me otherwise. I understand that we can minimize and maybe make sure that the color is correct, and maybe the location and the array can be changed, but we can't say no to solar panels if it comes before us. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. No, I think the thing you said that wasn't exactly true is you can't say it should be someplace else.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, if you're in the front of the, I mean, if it's in the front, if there's solar panels that are street-facing, we can't say, put the solar panels in the back. You can't, because that's, that's the direction that is the most energy-efficient, if that is what the applicant says is the best location based on the installer, we can't say move them entirely, because that's going to be what is appropriate. We can say, oh, make them black, or make them brown, or maybe make them, you know, maybe a few less, or make the array different, but we can't say no. So what concerns me is we've given a notice requirement, but we've also have it now coming before the ARB, but we really can't say no. We can say no to everything else that comes before us if we think it's not in keeping with the neighborhood and in keeping with the charge that's before us.
Not to take a position one way or the other on this, but it happens with other things like special permits, you have to give notices to neighbors.
Yes.
But you can't deny special permit.
Yes.
Because it's a permitted use. So it's a similar thing, so just because somebody has noticed, doesn't mean that they can come in and say no. But they could say, hey, listen, if it were placed differently, there wouldn't be so much clear on my property, or you should be aware that we use this side, you know, this side of the house is where the baby's bedroom is, or something like that, you know. But there are, there are other situations where there's public hearings on things, but you have to allow it, but maybe, maybe make adjustments.
I understand, and I understand how the special permit analogy too, but if you were, if you're coming before the ARB, in essence, you're saying to us that we have the ability to make a decision that's in keeping with the characteristic of the neighborhood. If we were allowed to say, okay, the solar panels can't be front-street-facing in this instance because we have neighbors that objected because it's not in keeping with historic neighborhood, and put them in another location in the back of the house, I can understand that, but we're not allowed to do that. So I just, I'm just not sure.
But you could suggest it.
Pardon?
You could suggest it.
Not, well, I mean, that's what's, to me, is a little, it's a little misleading, like, you're suggesting that the applicant's coming before the ARB to the public and that we have some type of authority to really suggest it, but the way that I read this law, I mean, it's within reason, I mean, we really, we really, it's, we're really powerless if you have.
And I think that in some ways, I mean, the problem is, I mean, how many applications have you had and how many have been approved? I mean, except that they're not, I mean, I don't think there's been one street-facing one that's ever been approved, because it is going to change the character, almost by definition. But what we're saying is, we understand that, we want to minimize that impact, and that's where we need your help. Not that you can say.
I don't know how much we can, I hear you, and it makes everybody feel good to say it's going before the ARB, and I think that's why Rick suggested maybe it should just go to Ed. I feel it's a false sense of security, I feel that these applicants are going to come before us, and we may be able to tweak it a little, but we're not going to be able to really address a neighbor's objection. I also think that what you're, the reason why I'm suggesting that maybe we could add another, give us a little bit more authority, is because now we really have a law that is emphasizing in the statement of purpose what your wishes and interests and the village's interests are. We really, we, I feel like it's more strongly worded now, so while a neighbor's objection and other concerns we can have can be one factor, it's not going to overweigh what is already in the statement of purpose.
See, I think that, I still feel if we, if we say, you know what, now you guys know that we like solar, and we say, just continue the way it's been, I still think we'll have zero, anytime it's going to be front-facing, it's going to change the character of the neighborhood potentially. And all you need is one neighbor who doesn't like the neighbor, and then it's, we have no solar again, you know, that's really what I'm, and that's what, that's what we've changed, because I think we've heard loud and clear that the ARB thinks that anytime there's front-facing solar, it changes the neighborhood, whether or not anyone's objected or not. So we're saying as a board, four to one, that we say that, yes, it might change the character, and we should try to minimize that as much as we can, but we want that application to be approved. So I think that's what the legislation says, is you're not reading it incorrectly, but we still think that that piece of saying minimize it as much as possible is important because I think you could have taken the example that Rick emailed and said, you know, this is, that's probably the cheapest one that was free from whoever installed it. That's not necessarily the best, you know, for that particular place, but at the end of the day, I actually look at that, and I don't say, oh my God, it's horrible, I say, it's not the freest rate, but I actually like to see the solar rack myself, you know, so I think it's very, you know, it's definitely a difference in opinion on solar. I don't think solar ruins the character, I think it looks great because I think it's, you know, I have to imagine when people started putting in paved driveways, it was like, what are you doing, you're ruining your lawn and putting a paved driveway, it's ugly. You know, so I think it's like, it's like a.
We didn't give it a collar, it's in a horse.
Yeah, exactly, you know, I think in some ways it's.
It's a fella, it's.
You know, but I think, you know, again, I think this is going to be, we're in a short period of time, maybe a decade right now, where this is going to look like this, and then it's not going to be an issue because you're going to have to decide, do you want shingled or, you know, instead of just shingled or asphalt, it's going to be shingled asphalt or solar built. You know, so it's, we're in kind of a tough position here, but if it does slow down, like, it seems that solar sometimes stops and starts, and with some changes coming to Washington that you might have heard about, it might slow down again. You know, so that's why I think it's important to, you know, kind of lean, I think we leaned one way, and I think we kind of, we could, you know, and I think frankly, we'll find out, Steve Park, the first application gets neighbors that are angry and waiting to speak to us on the first public call, you know, I think then we'll know we leaned too far the other way.
Look, I'm not here to persuade you otherwise, I can, I know where you come from on this, and I think you're obviously very understanding of where the ARB comes from. I do think it's a strong statement that you've got all five members objecting to not having any type of authority when it comes to solar panels, and we, all five of us agree that this is weakly worded in terms of giving us authority, especially in light of the fact that we, you're building in a notice requirement that allows neighbors to object, so we're really going to listen and do our best. But I'm not here to persuade you, I'm really stating that I agree with both Mark and Connie that if there's an opportunity to build some type of clause in here that is a fallback mechanism, if we really need to object to the solar panels, I think it would be good, there comes a lot of trust with that, I understand, because you know that the ARB is not in favor in historic neighborhood to have front-facing solar panels.
Or any, any.
Or in other neighborhoods, I agree. But again, that's where we are. I'll turn the mic over to Gail, because she also had, there's a second part of our concern, but thank you very much.
Can I just ask you a question? Not really knowing how your committee works or having been to it, are you ever in a situation where part of your vote is to try to mediate a bit, so you've got a.
Absolutely.
Okay, so you've got a neighbor who, you've got a proposal before you, you've got a neighbor or two who object to whatever it is, so before you make your decision, part of what you do is try to reach, so if somebody came to you, even though you couldn't, you know, you have certain guidelines, or if the proposal doesn't meet the guidelines, you certainly could say no, or if the objection seems to you reasonable for a particular reason, you could perhaps help to resolve the conflict?
It does happen often, the only thing that I would point out is that with solar panel applications, we tend to get the contractor, we do not get the homeowner. So the, trying to negotiate with a vendor is really impossible. So that, that's why I say our hands are really tied, because rarely have we seen the applicant show up for solar panel applications. We're really saying to the vendor, can you do that? And he says, no, I really can, or we'll say, can you move it? He's like, this is the best I can, these are my drawings, and then really, under the law, the way it's written, we're just going to have to say, okay. That, there really is a distinction, this is a different type of application than some of the others. Well, I'll let Gail, that's part of what Gail wanted to talk about.
Oh, anyway, and it has happened, but it is with the contractor, where we just get them to change the color maybe, because, should I tell them, I mean, one contractor
because, I mean, one contractor came to us and they were putting blue on, and we asked why it was blue, and he said, well, that's the, that's the color we, we always use, because then the neighbors will ask about it, it shows more. And we're, and first of all, we couldn't believe he said it to us, but they had black. You know, they had other colors that were much more. So, so it's, it's really been a little bit of a loose thing. But I just wanted to thank you all for your comments, and I think you are sort of at the forefront, and I'm very connected to an MIT engineer who worked for SARA, which is the largest advising company to the world on energy needs, and now works for the National Great Grid as part of what they call their, their chart tank, looking for new energy. So I asked him what the status of roof tiles and what the status of regular solar panels were, and he quoted exactly what he said, Brian, that Tesla has already made the announcement that they have a glass solar roof tile that's very effective. 3M came out with one, they were selling it through Home Depot, it wasn't a good product, and it's already gone by the wayside. So I think maybe hesitating a little on this, since there obviously are a lot of, you know, huge concerns. And I also know there's been a lot of bad press on the China-made solar panels that have read in The Times, how they were not effective, and people, you know, they're deteriorating very quickly. So, you know, maybe slowing down a little bit on this, you know, isn't the worst thing, so.
I just have one comment. I see what you're saying about the contractor, but it seems to me that you ought to be able to say, to get the homeowner in there, to say, listen, this contractor is saying that it's got to be, it's got to be blue, because that's all it carries. Get yourself another contractor who'll come up with something, you know, the better. I, I would think that would be within, within the...
It's the homeowner's application, not the contractor's application.
I don't think that's real world, though, because of the way the marketplace works. I mean, we have someone here in the audience that might be able to talk about the idea of whether or not you can actually change contractors like that. It depends whether you're buying the system outright, I think.
Well, that's okay. I mean, it doesn't ma, well, just practically, it doesn't make sense. I don't know how that industry works, but I don't think that the village, let's say they decide, we're only going to use this one contractor in Irvington, and all he's going to have is blue stuff, blue ones, and those were going to have to be on the roof. They're like, we're locked in, because that's how the industry's doing it? Well, you know...
Well, in fact, if you're in pastings or territatar somewhere, I'm not sure exactly where, where there were solarized, pastings or solarized territatar. My understanding is that they actually selected one or two contractors to run that program to give the particular discounts or whatever the financial model was. I don't remember.
I think I was right.
And then that way, you would be conceivably stuck with options choice if there was, if that was really all the approved installer carried. I don't know, you know, that's a lot of if, if, ifs, but it could happen.
It is one of the fastest-changing industries as well. You know, I'd like, you know, we might look at this in a year and say, you only have, you put it in glass. You know, like that you can't tell, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that, because, you know, I'm not saying that I want to be able to see solar panels open again, they don't bother me so much. But, you know, I, I can see going that, that change as soon as it is widely available. And Tesla tends to overpromise and underdeliver a little bit, but if it's half as good as I think they say it is, it will be a viable product in, in the near term, in the next, you know, six to eighteen months. So, you know, this is something that we, we might be changing the guidelines very quickly on. You know, and I wouldn't be opposed to that either, but, you know, I think we are where we are right now.
As a matter of interest, this is like kind of the gee whiz factor technology. There's been, you know, under development, it was announced recently, paint, that you could actually apply on any surface that was eligible to. Which is cool, too. That's legal, but it comes in only one color, though, gray.
Gray, orange.
He also did tell me that he believes in Germany. He didn't know the specific names, but they already have several of these integrated roof shingles that are solar panels.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I mean Tesla's...
Said he could speak to me after his conferences today, but I said, no, it's okay.
Tesla says they're going to be better than a regular roof, period, and it's also going to be solar. So it's almost like a second kicker. It's kind of like it's a better car, perhaps it's electric, that kind of thing.
So, so, so given that discussion about the changing technology, which is certainly exciting, if it makes it more attractive, more common, that's great. But I go back to those little houses on Main Street that are, are part of the gateway and part of the historic district, and in the next three or four months, a contractor comes along and says, hey, how about here? And the ARB says, okay, I can mitigate this, I can mitigate this, and it's, but I have to say yes now. I, I don't know why we can't carve out at least a historic district part of this so that, so that it's softened, especially given this change. How much difference is it going to make in the overall number of solar? Maybe there are, maybe there are four places that this could affect, but it, it makes a statement that, yes, we, we went to a lot of trouble to have a historic district, and maybe this is one thing that would make sense there. I also think of some of the landmark buildings in town. If they happen to be facing the right way, maybe they are, maybe they aren't. But what if the owner of one of those buildings said, I'd like to put panels on there right now, and they're not those, those new technologies, they're not the, the paint or the tiles, and if we had waited a little bit, they could have had their panels, and no harm to the look of those historic buildings would have happened. So these are the things that have kept me up at night thinking about this legislation. And I, I love the word balance, and reasonable people disagree, and I respect my colleagues here very much, and I respect the point of view of the, the public. But I'm, I'm just not comfortable with where this is in this current law right now. And I appreciate having the chance to hear others from the public on this, and I hope we can continue to listen. Public.
First of, first and two-thirds so far. Another reason to have Skype.
I'm Nikki Cottington. I live on Hillside Terrace, and I'm also a member of the Green Policy Task Force. And also, as you, many of you know, I'm professionally involved with solar in, through the Solarized Westchester Program. I want to, I think balance is the word for the night, and I want to, you know, extend my appreciation to all the board for the amount of time and thought that you put into this. I first wrote you guys a letter on behalf of the Green Policy Task Force on May 10 about our initial recommendations about the topic. And I, we did say in that letter that you could carve out a historic district, you could carve out design guidelines, specific design criteria for historic district if you chose to, other municipalities. There are, there are examples of other municipalities that have done that, if you choose to do so. I think, you know, well, just, you know, just to remind you, so that was in May, and you sent a draft in June, and I sent you guys some resources from the state and from the Pace Land Use Law Center in June, and then some new resources in August. I last saw this draft in September, and it appeared unchanged from, from June, so I didn't send in any new comments. And so in terms of timeline, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of something that had come out in October 3, the Uniform Code Supplement, which takes, it's from the Department of State, and it takes, it sort of combines and gives better guidance on integrating the building code and fire code, fire safety code into, you know, solar applications. And so where that's relevant particularly is in, and I can write this down, but with the respect to things like the three-foot setback, first of all, where, where you say that three-foot setback or distance is a little bit ambiguous in, in the guidelines. So I think that could be clarified, and then I would suggest, and I will send you that document, of this, pages and pages from, there's a presentation from the PD Trainers Network, which is part of New York State, where they break down for different roof configurations to max, to, to allow for, I'll just, you know, give you an idea. So for different roof configurations, to allow for three-foot access for fire responders, but not to have that three-foot requirement encroach on all sides of, of the roof, which basically would leave you with a postage stamp for, for, you know, the area of, of the solar system. So I think that, that piece could be clarified, and also that guidance could be provided to the ARB. With respect to the discussion that just came in, actually, I, I came here because I was hoping there would be members of the public here to, you know, I wanted to hear their opinion. And I respect the, you know, the opinion of the, the ARB. I will say that, you know, there are many places where ARB isn't even involved in approving or, or in the permitting process for solar. But I think this is, what you've proposed here is a, a reasonable balance between just allowing solar as a right and having some control over what it looks like. And, and believe me, I haven't seen my share of ugly solar installations. I, I think, I, I do think that, that technology will improve, but it will take time, and it will take time to shake out and really become viable. I mean, building integrated solar has been around for at least 10 years. Used to be there were, like, at least 10 years ago, there were roof tiles that were solar, but the problem was they were like Christmas tree lights, that, you know, if one went out, the whole thing would go out. So, and we can't wait for that, we can't wait for it to be perfect. And there are very attractive systems now, you don't, you don't have to be stuck with blue. I think, you know, with the criteria that you've proposed, the guidelines that you've proposed, you know, there will be some, some challenges. I mean, if somebody has a roof that's white tan, for example, you know, I don't know what you're going to do. But, you know, there are very attractive black, matte, you know, non-reflective systems. So I, I, I do encourage it. I, I don't know what you could do to get more public opinion, to hear more from, from your residents. Scarsdale, as you know, has been going through the same thing, and they actually conducted a survey with their residents about, you know, what people felt about front-facing solar and, and, you know, what the process should be and so on. And I can, and send you that PowerPoint that was presented at their October board meeting, village board meeting. So I think I can, I really see the effort that you guys have put into it. I think there are a few tweaks that could be made. I do encourage you to try to highlight this in a, you know, a letter from the mayor or something, some kind of publicity that would get more people weighing in. And I don't want it to drag on a long time either, but I do think the historic district, I mean, the historic society should weigh in, and we, you know, I would like, I would like you to hear from more people, more, more residents.
Yeah, I would actually have a few people there, just to try and true, board members to come there. Too bold.
No.
This is a law to require everyone to put a solar on their roof and see what comes out.
Just to clarify something, at the, at the beginning, you, you mentioned the letter from the Green Policy Task Force, and in that you were, you as a group were comfortable with carving out a historic district, carve out, or however you would say that.
Yeah, you'd have special, you know, more stringent design criteria. And there are many, you know, historic designated buildings around the country that have solar, and it can be done well.
I wanted to point out that we did think about this quite a bit in a sense of the, we were talking about, you couldn't modify significant features of the building, like cornices and dormers and stuff like that, remove them or whatever, so in an installation. And we had talked about making it such that, I forgot how the language ended up, or maybe we didn't put this language in after all, but the notion of if you were to remove a system, you want to be able to make sure that you've done the least amount of damage to, you know, significant visual features of the building, especially when you're looking at historical buildings.
Yeah.
Did we put something in there specifically about removal requirements? Or we just said that they could not?
I don't think so.
I don't remember seeing anything of that.
We talked about protecting features.
No, we didn't, because we decided, I mean, I think that the consensus was it was impactful.
To remove?
To, to say that you couldn't, you know, harm the roof, you know, you had to minimize the harm to the roof.
Well, the roof is going to be harmed anyways, but we protected, we protected our actual features.
We were asking, how was what, that was, I think we decided was impactful, so we talked about it.
Because it was going to, no matter how you mount them, they're going to be damaging the roof tiles, period. You know, whatever they're made out of.
Nikki, I think some of the balancing we did actually was to impose the kinds of restrictions that might in other places be what would be the historical carve-out. So make it not as a right, except in a historical district or a municipal, but really have these criteria applied throughout.
Right, I think that's, I think that's a good...
You actually discussed the historic district. It wasn't, it was something the board didn't think about, thought about.
Right, no, I, I know, I, but since it had come up as, you know, a lingering concern, that's why I addressed it. Also, regarding the question about who comes to the ARB meeting, so in my experience, you know, it's often the architect, and for, for non-solar things, it's often the architect that comes, not necessarily the homeowner. For solar, it makes sense for the installer to come, because the installer can explain the technical things and has the, you know, he or she has the presentation materials that the homeowner would not have. But typically, when you've gotten as far in the process, especially if you have a noticing requirement, you, you have to go, you apply for a building permit, and it, and the, you know, the ARB noticing requirement. I mean, that all has an expense and a time burden to it. To then go through that and then ask a different, you know, suggest that they have a different installer, that, that wouldn't really work. But, you know, if you have these design guidelines, and then you go through, and, you know, the end product is these design guidelines, then you can publicize those, and then anybody, you know, applying for a project in Irvington would know that they would have to meet those visual criteria, so it would sort itself out, you know, eventually.
That's what you would hope, but here's one argument, it's the, to the fullest extent, practicable, which means, here's, I'm a contractor and I only have blue.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's, I know what you're saying, and it, and it does, that's what the hope is. The hope is it's published guidelines, people come forward, and they're conforming to the wishes of the community. So, but...
Well, and then there's also the expense issue. I mean, you know, some installers only have blue because that's cheaper than, than the matte black.
Right.
And, anyway. One more, I did have a question. So if equipment shall be installed and screened in a manner that minimizes its visibility from surrounding properties and public rights away, I think that needs to be clarified. What do you mean by screened?
No, screened is a very common term used. The planning board applies it all the time, the ARB applies it all the time. But you screen in different ways. You can screen with plantings, you can screen with fences, you could screen with a parapet. I mean, there's different ways to screen.
But you can't screen, I mean, if I'm on a street and I'm looking at...
It doesn't have to screen the panels, but maybe you screen from the, maybe, maybe to do what you put, you plant some shrubbery along, it doesn't have to be along the panels. what you put, you plant some shrubry along, it doesn't have to be along the panels, but along the neighbor's house, that would screen.
And so you would require the homeowner to do that?
It's often done. Screening is often, but if you, if you wanna put in a swimming pool.
Yes, I know, but swimming pool is on the ground, the panels are up there. You're not gonna be able to install anything that's going to screen it.
I'm gonna say.
This is what we're standing on, I think. Yeah, this is.
No, it just, it doesn't specify that.
I was reading out a number six.
Guideline number two, guideline number two.
I mean, there are conditions where you can see that screening along property line could reduce sun glare, for instance, off the panels to a neighbor's house, which has been a complaint, one of the major complaints with the ARB was the glare complaint. So, you're not, again, it's angle of incidence, et cetera, et cetera, so could you, you can't just discount that in all cases screening is in fact, in some cases, it's ridiculous.
Not in all cases, but I think by having a statement that says, "Equipment shall be installed and screened in a manner that minimizes its visibility from surrounding properties," and you're talking about stuff that's on a roof above eye level, I don't know how you're gonna do that in a practical manner in more than, you know, maybe five percent of the cases.
It says to the extent possible, since they're not only on roofs, so it says to the extent possible, it doesn't mean it goes to.
Actually, it doesn't, it just says, "In a manner that minimizes its visibility."
But it says, well, maintaining viability and functional integrity, so that's, that kind of lets out the worst of the screening opportunities.
Well, it's a situation, let's say, where I was, that somebody comes in and says, "It's gonna, it's gonna be clear, because it's right outside my baby's bedroom." So, you can say, if you put, if you put some shrubs along the property line, then it might, you know, screen the glare from the baby's bedroom. That's one example, I'm sure there are others.
First of all, in most cases that I'm aware of, the glare is transient. You know, it's not like it's sitting there, you know, twelve hours a day glaring, because the sun moves, you know, different times of year, different times of day, the sun's moving. So, you might, you know, look, be having your breakfast and look down at somebody's solar panels, and they're reflecting for, you know, ten minutes or something, but it's not, and, you know, going to be all the time. And I just, I think that number two, guideline number two, is going to present a problem for you. I think there will be.
So, I'm interested in your Scarsdale public survey piece that you were, in other words, it would be the kind of question, like, how does the public feel about visibility in this, that kind of thing? It was like a public questionnaire?
Yeah, it was a questionnaire. I'll send you their PowerPoint, where they really tell their village board about, about the survey and the reaction and so on.
Do they have the results?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we get it? Yeah, can you just tell us the, yes, share it with us, so we just have it.
They were opposed to it.
So, there were several questions, including, "Should solar panels be authorized for installation upon the front elevation of residential properties? And if so, what are the appropriate rules, procedural requirements for installation guidelines, including aesthetic guidelines, taken into account consideration pending New York State Plan 16 Building Fire Protection Code Amendments?"
If they could answer it. Pretty good, pretty good. Everyone would mess up. I don't think we're gonna get numbers.
Yeah, exactly.
On a scale of one to ten?
Okay.
Another question, about tree canopy.
I think we should say it's more in depth, but just eighty-six percent said no.
So, for example, sixty-one percent, to the question, "Should residents be permitted to install solar panels on the street-facing roof of their homes? Sixty-one percent of residents said yes, without any need for approval by the Board of Architectural Review. Ten, sixteen percent said no, they should not be permitted to install panels on those street-facing sides of their homes. Twenty-one percent said maybe, subject to approval by the Board of Architectural Review. Two percent was other.
This is a long one.
But also, it's still, they were around eighteen to twenty percent of people will be against anything, so, that's sixteen in this case.
And another question about colors.
Of course, thank you for finding that.
Thank you for forwarding that, really.
Thank you very much.
So, this is a matter of, from what Nikki was saying, do we need to look at the screening language, just to see if it's, if there's any conditionalization that's needed in it? I mean.
I think the language is completely inconsequential, almost completely.
Say it again, Larry.
I think the language is almost completely inconsequential, to be honest with you.
The number two part?
Yeah, I think because of that last modifier about, just about impairing the viability of the equipment, ninety-five percent of the time, you're not gonna be able to screen it without reducing the effectiveness of the equipment, in all likelihood, because of where they're typically installed, the height and all that. But, to the extent that you might have a five percent chance of doing something positive when it doesn't impair the use of the equipment, keep that as a there for. That's, that's not a showstopper, right? If you didn't have that last little clause at the end, it might have been much more a showstopper, I don't think it is.
But I guess the one, my reading of what Nikki was saying was, there could be conditions where you could have screening, but the cost of screening would be so significant in order to actually achieve the screening, that, you know, what are you asking the homeowner This probably has never been a consideration in site plan approval, about the cost of the landscape, it's whatever's needed. So, I guess the question is here, is it whatever's needed? If it's possible, they gotta do it?
Can I ask you something? Rick, this is the Chair of the ARB. So, putting this up in my position, especially when you look at items one and two, all measures should be taken to avoid or mitigate any clearance neighboring residential property or the public right of way. My first question is gonna be to the applicant, what have you done to mitigate glare? And they're not gonna have anything, because they didn't perhaps read the guidelines, but in the same mode, item two is, what have you done to screen in a manner that minimizes visibility from the right of way? And once again, I don't know what they're gonna, you know, what they're gonna tell me. So, based on, if they tell me, well, nothing, and well, nothing on one and two, do I automatically deny the applicant? Or do I wait for an answer? Perhaps they come back the next meeting and, you know, bring an answer. That's the way this reads, even with the viability and functional integrity. We haven't even gotten to that part of it, you know, in this conversation. I'm just not sure how to have it saved.
And so, then number two, they can say, we don't, there's no, there's no way of having viable and functional products with any, you know, additional screening than what we already have, or something like that.
And it's up to us to believe them or not believe them.
Well, there has to be a reason for this thing, because then, again, Nikki's example, it's up on the second story of a roof, and how wide, where's the property line, trigonometry, how large does the plan have to be to actually provide the screen?
Well, if you're talking about plans, you're correct, but at the same time, you could be talking about, on a six-inch high, you know, like, classic example was the Dogwood Lane issue.
Okay.
Whereas, I don't know if you've ever been there since it's been put up, but you clearly see the cells on top of the roof. However, if they screened in front of it, you wouldn't see them. Meaning, if on a six-inch height, if you put a twelve-inch high or eight-inch high, you know, something to screen them off in the front.
Like a coping type of thing?
Anything, you know.
And flashing?
Yeah. You wouldn't see them. It would, it would look silly, I think, but you still wouldn't see them. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't look like an unfinished project, which it does now.
Which number?
I'm not even sure. It was the one that was denied by the ARB and overruled by the ZBI. It's the only front-facing.
All the way up at the top.
It's the only front-facing property on Dogwood Lane that has solar cells.
So, kind of extending what Mr. Razulo was talking about here, under, when could the ARB with this law, if everything that's here got passed by our board, what could they say no to?
I think, I think that's pretty, I think Rick Cav's a pretty good example, like, if you've done everything to mitigate glare, and they say, "We haven't looked at glare," or, you know.
So, then they say, "This is denied."
They didn't come back.
Yeah, they didn't come back.
Yeah, they didn't come back.
Yeah, figure it out.
What you can do, come back.
So, they come back and they say, "There's nothing we can do," and then.
They say, "We've done everything we can to mitigate the glare," and Rick can say, "Well, what did you do?" And they said.
Nothing.
Nothing, and they says, "Well, that's, you know, that's not an acceptable answer." But if they came, they said, "Well, we, you know, we look at different times a day, and we, you know, you know, it all depends on the answer," but I think that that's kind of the practical thing, you know. But if I'm on the ZBI, which I'm not, but if I was, I'd look at one and two and say, "Well, they were asked the question, they asked the question, we can move on."
Yeah, I mean, except if they, but they don't come back with an answer, you know, like an acceptable answer, and that's the.
There's two different things. Somebody could come back to you and say, "We really, there's nothing we can really do to avoid glare, you know, and there's no reasonable way we can mitigate it." That's the answer. It might not be, you know, a wonderful resolution of the situation, but that's an answer. That's different from saying, "Never even bother checking it out." So, I think that's, that's part of the judgment.
At the same time, item two, you could say, "Well, we can't do anything, we've already investigated, we can't do anything to mitigate," or, you know, "We will affect the viability and functional integrity of the project if we do." So, once again, there's, as Connie just said, there's nothing beyond the guidelines. Now that nine-dash-one is out of the equation, that the ARB can use to deny a project, an application.
But how would nine-dash-one help you in those two questions, in one and two?
Well, it wouldn't.
Okay, just want to be clear about that, so.
But it's not just, I mean, this is it. This is our charge, right here.
That's right. That's kind of what I'm saying, though, because, I mean, we were, I think we were oh for every application that was front-facing, so, and then we were kinda asked for guidance, because the ones overturned, so, you know.
One. There were others that weren't, because they weren't, you know.
Did they go to the ARB, though? As a public policy.
The ones on Dogwood, I mean, on Singapore, no, I don't, well, maybe free my, you know, term, but I wouldn't be surprised if they, if they could have been turned down and then, you know, approved by the ZBI, I have no idea.
I don't think so. But, I mean, I think that that's what, the whole purpose of this is to, you know, kinda say, other than, you know, we want all these things to be considered about making the impact as little as possible, but we're still, as a board, saying, you know, we're okay with some impact, changing some character, because we think it's in the public interest or we think it's, you know, trumps that in this case.
And maybe, maybe in certain cases, but I will tell you that, you know, in a conversation with Deb today, just like anything else, any of these, almost any legislation that you have, you have nobody coming to these meetings to consider.
It's unfortunate.
Happened to them, should it happen next door to their house, then you're gonna hear about it. So, then you're gonna be asked to change the legislation. I just, I just don't, I know that that's what, what's gonna happen in this case, especially if, you know, a project in certain neighborhoods happens, because you will get it, you're all pushed by it. But will-get and are-getting are two different things, I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm frankly very disappointed that no one showed up tonight. It's cold, it's not that cold. But, you know, we are gonna, the Historic Society, Historic Society sent us a letter that they weren't able to meet yet and discuss this, so we are gonna continue this, so hopefully some people will show up, as we already continued with the public hearing anyway, actually, we just started, but, you know.
I think that, you know, both Deb and Rick have brought up the point, which I know my colleagues know this, but it, by accepting the part of this law, which is section two B, it says, "In reviewing building permits for solar energy equipment, notwithstanding nine-seven," now, you have to know what nine-seven is about, which obviously, Mary and the rest of us know.
Well, you need to start to know the basics, Nancy.
Yeah, the basic standards.
And those refer to section nine-one, which Rick was referring to.
Right, and nine-one is essentially the task, the job, the domain of the Architecture Review Board, their basic principles that they do their work on, which is character and, you know, you can read the whole thing.
Harmonious.
Harmonious, so they're being asked, when this law goes into effect, as to set that aside, everything that they do with everything else, where they, they use their judgment. And yes, I understand, they do use their judgment in this issue of mitigating to the extent possible, but when you read that B, "In reviewing building permits for solar energy equipment, notwithstanding nine-seven," they can't use that.
That's correct.
At all. I know, I know, that's what I'm saying. My colleagues understand this, we've discussed this, but I just, I think it's important.
I think it's because by definition.
They can't think about character.
Because by definition, if you put a solar array in the front of a home, it's changing the character.
But now that.
No matter how beautiful it is.
I know, I don't need to, what I'm saying is, I would like it to be very clear to the public, besides us, I mean, obviously, there hasn't been a whole lot of interest in this, I haven't had a whole lot of, you know, out, however, whatever we do to get people to, to think about this, I know we've tried.
Here with the enterprise, it's a story.
But I would, I would say that it's, just like in Scarsdale, they've, they've obviously gotten a fair amount of public opinion from doing, however they got people to answer those long questions. But would people who understood this, who walk on Main Street and look at those buildings that they face, would they be okay with this, that they, there's no circumstance, even in the historic district, where they can use character to say, "In this case, right now, you can't make it, you, we can't screen that, because you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, is that okay?" And by this law, they would have to say, "Yes, it's okay, go ahead." And I just wonder where the public would come down on that. It's not a whole lot, so, that's why we have public hearings.
Come and tell us.
That's why we have public, but I'm just saying, I think that the reason I'm reading that part is to make it clear that these guidelines are helpful, balance is the right thing. People are on a different place in this, and they're all valuable. I come down on one place, and I'm just anxious to hear if other people would be okay with all those circumstances that we just described. And if it changes in six months, it'll be a shame, but it happened on Main Street, and it just could have waited a bit, I think, you know, that would have been better, but that's why we have public hearings.
Nikki?
I, I was gonna say, and then you said it, perhaps a newspaper article, because I do think that, you know, there's a continuum of opinion that if people sort of were, you know, given examples to think about, you know, you could talk about, or maybe even do a PowerPoint presentation, that's your next hearing, you know, version of this public hearing, where, you know, without embarrassing, without wanting to embarrass any homeowners in Irvington, or maybe, you know, homes in other villages where there are unsightly installations, you could give examples of what you're trying to avoid.
They know what you're talking about, I sent them a picture yesterday. I did, I said, "They know what I'm doing."
They do, yes, but the public doesn't, and I'm trying.
Well, they have one picture that they can use as one ugly sight.
Right, well, yet again, I'm not trying to embarrass my neighbors or our neighbors, you know, and I can think of plenty of, you know, unfortunate installations that could have been better. And I can think of many beautiful and, you know, really appropriate installations. So, I think if, you know, if you're not getting people to come out to this, and, you know, who knows who's watching or wanting to watch, but, you know, if. know, who knows who's watching or wanting to watch, but, you know, if, you know, you might consider talking to the Historic Society and then, you know, having a bunch of people give input to, you know, the Enterprise and do an article, maybe with some pictures, maybe do a PowerPoint at the next meeting, but something to get people thinking, "Oh, yeah, I don't want that," or, "Yeah, no, I think it should be," you know, or, "I don't want, I don't want to have my opportunity to generate my own solar energy and that financial benefit, I don't want that to be taken away from me because my neighbor across the street doesn't like the way it looks." So you've got that end of the spectrum, then you've got, you know, it's, I don't want to look at it. So, you know, if you want to get the public out, you know, maybe create some article or conversation, a proper conversation about it.
Okay. We'll keep the public hearing open, so we'll try to do some kind of outreach. Hopefully, Tim Lamore or one of his reporters is watching and is interested in an article. I don't know, during the winter, it slows sometimes.
Sure, what would be the next date of, it's not a work session that...
No, it'd be the, it'd be the week after, so it'd be, it's actually a Wednesday, the eighteenth, the eighteenth.
I won't be here then.
I think so, I believe so.
Yeah, we could find that out. We'll continue it anyway, but we'll continue it one more time.
The eighteenth of January?
Yeah.
Rick will be here, I won't be here.
It's an art pack meeting. All right, well, we're continuing to keep it open anyway. Next is an approval of intermunicipal agreement with the town of Greenberg regarding the town's use of the Irvington sewer system. I like this. Confer Solar State for the sewer. I'll, I'll public comment on it.
So, the town of Greenberg has an interconnection for a section of unincorporated Greenberg that actually empties out into the village's sewer system. So there's been a longstanding intermunicipal agreement with Greenberg that is up for renewal, and it's the document that you have in front of you. Basically, it provides for a payment to the village, not a terribly large payment, but it's, it's actually 10% of the lowest level employee salary in the water and sewer department in Irvington, so.
That's, that's just a few thousand dollars.
Six thousand, seven thousand dollars, maybe, yeah, with overtime and all that, so that's about what the contract's worth on an annual basis, so. But it is, it does typically run for 10 years, and I believe that's what this renewal is here. Greenberg is considering it in, sometime in January, I think possibly as early as the 11th, but I'm trying to find out. But anyway, we're trying to get our ducks in a row here.
Has there ever been an issue with it?
Never, other than making sure we get it approved and renewed on time, which I've been pushing for nine months.
Pushing, we can't shut the valve, right?
No, but if, if there was no agreement, we could force them to disconnect and connect somewhere else, but they don't really have any options. Not, not any viable, not any viable options, so.
So that hasn't been valid, viable?
No.
And 10% of the lower salary is reasonable here?
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, it's a punitive measure that's been used for many years in this contract. How do you measure the, the actual cost of maintenance of sewer pipes that are there already because we have a sewer system in the area?
So what happens if there's an actual outage?
Is this mountain road?
Outage? You know, like a break in the system.
It's our line, they have to repair it, yeah.
And we don't, we're not getting anything from, anything further from Greenberg for that?
No, no, but, but again, the line is an existing line that serves Irvington customers as well, so.
It's not like an extension?
Correct. They have, they have sewer line on their side of the border that serves their residents, but it comes to a point where it dumps into our sewer, you know, the area of Mountain Road, where Blueberry Hill is, that's, you know, one side of the road's Greenberg, one side's Irvington, we happen to have the sewer main down the middle of the road, so.
Just on our side?
I believe, yeah.
So, so just in general, again, I know I'm new to all of this, but over the last couple of meetings, we've been renewing agreements that come up. And it was interesting, I thought, last month, when we renewed the agreement with the police, that Ricky...
Westchester County, yes.
Right, which has the new agreement, Mark came up with the question, which was a more modernized question, that, you know, is there something about cybersecurity involved, which I'm sure 10 years ago was not an issue? You know, assuming that we're looking at these kinds of questions and trying to find out, not just, you know, printing up the exact same thing we had before.
Yeah, well, this sewer agreement's a little less dynamic than Ricky's agreement.
David Stanger's a moment's time.
What about cyber sewer?
We're closed down here.
Well, you know, I mean...
No, no, absolutely, but the question that Mark raised is a very valid one. In fact, we, we had, I do have a question out there with the county, and I'm waiting for a proper response, I can't, can't make that answer up for sure, so I'm waiting for the right person to get back to me on that. But, but as far as this goes, there's really, really nothing's changed, and when I say nothing's changed, I mean, you know, these are probably 80-year-old sewer lines, you know.
Something has changed. It's 10 years later.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, they...
It's hell, no baby wax, something like that.
Remember, we don't have our own sewer treatment lines, fortunately, this all dumps into the county sewer treatment lines.
Any onyx, right?
Actually, yeah.
Yep.
Let's ask Mary Ann what she thinks about our sewer thing here, what do you think?
I reviewed it, it's great.
Oh, good, that's all I needed to hear.
Modern.
It's cutting-edge sewer law. "The result authorized the mayor to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Greenberg regarding the town's use of our sewer system." I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So, all right, we'll sign this until, I got one from...
Yeah, we have to wait for the council approval, but I figured we might as well.
Yep. Next is approval of an extension agreement with Westchester County for access to telecommunications services.
So another, another extension agreement.
This is not 80 years old.
No, no. So the village has been part of a county contract that was issued a number of years ago, and actually, they have been updating it over time. And the contract initially was for the connection or the interconnection of various county buildings, and this dates back to probably the early 2000s. And in going out to bid for this, they came across their winning vendor, and part of this bid involved the fact that, as long as this vendor was building out an infrastructure to connect the various county buildings, they were then also going to allow municipalities to connect into that network, it's a fiber network that's run by LightPath. And by allowing the various communities to do that, it allows us all to be essentially wired back to the county, to the point where our entire network, the village's local network, is managed behind the scenes by the county, which is an extremely valuable service to us, because we don't have a staff of IT professionals managing our wide-area network. We certainly have inside people managing a local network, but the wide-area work is done by the county, so this agreement provides for that. It also provides for the pricing and the actual access to the services under this contract. So it's a centralized contract for the, for the provision of data services in all of our village buildings, and also, we're now currently taking advantage of voice-over-IP phone services through this contract, so that's, that's fairly recent development. And that's the contract, so we need to, we need to continue on part of this intermunicipal agreement. It gets renewed periodically, as you see here, pricing is updated, and in fact, pricing is structured in such a way that, as there's more dollar volume access through this contract, the pricing actually goes down, which I guess you'd expect. So that's one of the benefits that we see, as other municipalities join on, and this is a very mature contract, so it's not as though this is growing in leaps and bounds anymore. Everyone's kind of signed into it and we're continuing on. So this is another one where Mary Ann did review it. She has had some questions about it in the past, I think the last time we renewed it, she had some questions. They're questions that really pose very minimal risk, and I just made the decision that they weren't worth, you know, trying to negotiate, which frankly, I don't know that we could have any power to negotiate those particular items anyway, but, but overall, it's a, it's a solid agreement.
Good question. "Whereas the village of Irvington and county of Westchester have previously entered into an agreement for access to telecommunications services provided by Kivell Legion, LightPath, and whereas the agreement has expired, the village desires to maintain continued access to the services provided in the agreement, now therefore be it resolved to approve an extension agreement with Westchester County for access to telecommunications services and to authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement."
I'll make a motion, can I have a second? All in favor? Next up is an approval of an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Greenberg regarding East Irvington Fire Protection District for 2017.
Yeah.
How did you hear?
Exactly.
You did the 16th.
You did, actually, and...
Very similar.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, we went through this at the last meeting, which involved the approval of the 2016 agreement for calendar year 2016. After that, the board took its action, after the item was on the agenda, Greenberg actually reached out to us and suggested that we should also draft up a 2017 agreement for approval, and I happily did so, and so there's no, really, there's no change, except for the dollar amount, it's just a very, you know, it's really based on estimates, but it's very similar. Otherwise, there's no other changes, everything is status quo, as you saw last time. This, just as an overview, this agreement provides for the village's fire department covering the area outside of Irvington in unincorporated Greenberg known as East Irvington, it's the East Irvington Fire District.
Where the sewer is.
It's in the area, yeah.
Cash cow.
Yeah, and the, the basic arrangement is that Greenberg pays the village of Irvington a certain amount for a coverage of that area. It's done on a fairly in-depth formula, but it's a similar formula as other fire districts who have these types of contracts, there's other villages that have these contracts with Greenberg, and so the payment is on the order of $92,000, I think it's in the agreement. Of that amount, 35%, which is provisioned in general municipal law, of that amount is 35% is paid by the village to the fire company, so, for the use by the membership. That's a standard provision that's been in general municipal law and has continued on here. I mean, you could say it's, it's a payment and acknowledgement of the fact that the volunteers who volunteered here in the village of Irvington, you can't just go around and shop their services without them being compensated in some fashion, even though they are volunteers, you're extending the borders in which they're responsible for it, so, but I think that's probably the history of where that comes from.
Well said, although, I'd say the only other piece of history was, again, I missed this last month, but we did 2016, was for, I guess almost a decade, it was like it seemed to be running in arrears about three or four years, and then we got a catch-up, but this is great that Larry's been kind of proactive and, you know, thanks to the Greenberg board for also kind of staying, staying abreast of this, it wasn't always this easy. This might be the first time we've ever done it, making the first day of the month or year?
Not the first, but pretty...
Maybe we've done a couple of catch-ups, we've caught up and got better, but to be this on time is, is great, and it's also, you know, I know the fire company appreciates it as well.
So do we have to ask our fire company to agree to do this, or do we say to our volunteers that by volunteering, you are agreeing to do?
I'm just curious. They signed this agreement, they're a party signature to this agreement, so in effect, you are asking them, I can tell you from past history, they're anxious to continue to cover it, obviously, I'm just curious, what came first, us telling them or them telling us?
You know, I think a lot of people think East Irvington's smart, Irvington anyway, so.
Everybody in the sewer certainly does.
Same sewer, same fire department, you know.
Same school system.
Same school system, exactly. Greenberg Rack, so I didn't press.
"Whereas the village of Irvington and town of Greenberg have reached agreement on the provision of the fire protection services for East Irvington Fire Protection District for the periods January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. Whereas the payment due from the town of Greenberg under said agreement is $92,048 for 2017, subsequent payment due from the village of Irvington to the Irvington Fire Company is $32,217 for 2017. Now therefore be it resolved to authorize the mayor to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Greenberg regarding the East Irvington Fire Protection District, and further resolved to authorize the clerk treasurer upon receipt of the payment from the town of Greenberg to make a payment of $32,217 for 2017 to their fire company in accordance with the terms and conditions of the intermunicipal agreement."
I'll make the motion, can I have a second? All in favor? Approval to reject all bids for the Station Road and Culver's project. Womp, 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 yeah.
Okay, why? Yeah, so the bids were received, the bids were much higher than what we thought.
Can you review the projects?
Sure. The project involves the replacement of a culvert that goes underneath Station Road, and it is in the vicinity of Brook Place. That culvert is undersized and has been identified by our engineers in our previous flood study as being a point of constriction and leads to flooding upstream from that location. So one of the projects that this board approved was a replacement of this culvert, and it's in a difficult location in terms of the right-of-way, it's very narrow at that point, and we needed to obtain easements from the property owners on either side in order to do the construction, and also in order to build on property that doesn't currently belong to us, so there's a permanent easement involved as well. So, the, the bids did come back higher than we thought. Our engineers were very surprised at certain areas where the contractors had assumed certain costs that we hadn't assumed. They worked hard to identify what those areas were and what the reason was that was driving those extra costs in the eyes of the contractors, and they are working towards revising the bid documents to yield what they believe will be a considerably lower bid. It may not be quite within our budget, because the budget was established 2012, 2013, when the mine was borrowed, so it's a few years later, but we'll be a lot closer if we fail, so.
A lot closer, what's the, what was the number you were looking for?
We thought the project was going to come in, in the, around 300,000 or, or lower 300s. No, no, forget about the Con Ed part, the Con Ed part is being paid directly by Con Edison, that's, that's actually one of the complicating factors in all of this.
So base bid?
The base bid amount, yeah, we thought would be in the lower threes.
And was there, can you go into anything about what factor or factors were, led to the confusion or led to the excess cost, or is there anything that can be clearly stated, or is it...
You know what, I have, I have a memo that describes this in detail, which I'm happy to forward here, it'd be easier than going through all the detail engineering aspects of it, but it has to do with, with the fact that there's a sewer line running through here, so there's a certain amount of pumping that has to happen while the sewer line is, is broken apart, and they put the culvert in, and there were certain assumptions that the contractors made that weren't accurate, you know, they, they, pumping is very special.
They're accurate.
Exactly, so.
Yeah.
There are some clarifications on that, there also were some assumptions based about maintenance, protection of traffic that were incorrect as well. We thought we were very clear about the fact that the road will be closed during this period of time, during construction, which means you don't, you don't need protection of traffic, you know, flagmen and all that, and so there were certain assumptions that were made incorrectly about that, and so we, you know, come up with a way of clarifying that. So, and there's other factors, which I'm, like I said, I'm happy to share with you.
But all of these, the people who submitted bids, they all worked on the same misconceptions?
Yes, yeah, I think, you know, there were probably things in the bid documents that needed to be done more clearly. And, you know, I had a very direct meeting with the engineers about that, and about that, and about future projects as well, and so we need to... And so we need to make sure that, you know, contractors are very busy at this point, and they need to have their hand held through the bid process. So you can't, these have to be right out there. You have to have a, you have to have a story right up front explaining how the, how the job needs to be done and what the key aspects of the job are. So there's, there's ways that we're trying to address that.
I, I got a letter from a resident, I guess, who had read this point on the agenda. I'm sure he doesn't know exactly what, what the project entails. But he pointed out that that is clearly the narrowest point on Station Road and probably the single most dangerous walking area on Station Road. And asked if it was considered that sidewalk work was considered at the same time, just perhaps just for that area as part of the project, and I told him.
Well, what you can say with complete confidence is that we are sizing the width of the culvert to allow for a sidewalk on, I, which side of the road, we haven't decided yet, frankly. But the side, the width of the culvert will be appropriate to allow for a sidewalk. The bigger issue is whether there'll be a sidewalk remainder of Station Road from there to the tunnel. And as you know, that, that was part of a grant submission, and it's a very expensive project, by the way. But this culvert is, is within that range where there is no sidewalk currently. And so we're not, we're not putting in a new culvert that will prevent us from having a sidewalk in this area. It'll be wide enough to accommodate it. It's just that right now, that'll be the only stretch where it'll have a sidewalk, if you put one in. So that's not exactly what we're trying to do, but the width will be there.
Whereas sealed bids were received at open on December seven, 2016, at eleven AM, the village hall, as detailed below. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bids, fitted and determined that the bids were not in order, not in responsive to the specifications. And now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees rejects all bids for the Station Road culvert project. Make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor.
So do you go back to the same people again?
Well, we have to, we have to publicly emphasize this bid, but they'll certainly all receive an obligation.
The next I'm adding is the second one, which is an appointment to the Irvington Woods Committee as well for Lisbeth Severance Park, Severance Park. So I'll read them, I'll read them both except if anyone has any questions. Otherwise, thank you for your service. Resolve to appoint Matt Spencer as a member of the Irvington Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, for term to expire December twenty eighteen. And further resolved to appoint Lisbeth Severance Park as a member of the Irvington Woods Committee for a term. What's that?
Do we get an end date on that? I apologize.
December twenty eighteen.
Okay, we'll get that.
And for her as well, December twenty eighteen. I believe this.
What's the name of the, the second name?
Lisbeth Severance Park. She was, she was an old time, Severance is the native name, she grew up here. Park is her married name. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Reports of boards, standing committees, and officers, trustee liaison reports.
I have nothing different than.
Than the previous meeting?
Yeah. I would like to welcome Matt and Lisbeth to their respective committees. Joe Caccino would like me to, again, thank the entire village for their involvement in the holiday basket delivery, both the funding, the gifts, and delivery. It was a great opportunity for, for people to become involved, and lots of people took advantage of it. The newest rec programs will be available next week online for registration, so people can get a heads start by taking a look. That's it.
Connie?
The theater, Broadway Training Center, one of the arts partner who have been performing here for years is celebrating their twenty-fifth anniversary with a gala this Saturday. They are performing the musical review Closer Than Ever. That's from Greg Allen at the theater. And the only other thing is I, I wanted to draw attention to what came in the mail to everybody, I believe, which was from our department, our DPW department. Did everyone in the public get this?
Just not if you have.
Say yes. This is a very valuable piece of paper. There are a few other copies of this in the lobby of village hall, apparently. But it also had a letter that looked like this in it, which I'm sure Mark saw because it had a whole description on the back of it about love 'em and leave 'em.
Actually, believe it or not, I didn't. My wife got to the mail, and all I saw was the calendar.
Ah.
I wondered if there had been a letter this year. So thank you.
That's why I'm doing this report for you, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
But I also, I was in touch with, with Greg this afternoon and asked him if there was anything he wanted to. What, what, what?
No, I just said Janice is making me cold looking at her.
Oh, oh, look, I've got. I've got on my vest. But Greg references the importance of understanding, obviously, how to do recycling. I'm not going to spend more than two minutes talking about recycling here, but there's a lot of valuable information on the back of this. And I know if you're like any other family, you look at something and you say to yourself sometimes, where does this go? So the one newer thing that is on the Westchester County site that Greg had announced some time before is that the recycling of cartons that are like milk cartons. They're okay to go in with the cans, glass, et cetera. Gable-top refrigerated food and beverage cartons, like milk cartons. They also has a term here called aseptic cartons. That's a word I didn't, non-dairy beverages and soup, juice boxes and ice cream containers. So there's, that's part of recycling. So anyway, there's a lot, I will do a little update every month.
That would pay with co-mingled?
It goes with co-mingled. It goes with co-mingled, right. That's interesting, but.
There's a constant debate in my house, but if this were changed.
By the county. But, but, you know, Greg is, always answers questions. There's a lot of, you know, information on here. And it's just really important to read it, do it right. We can save a lot of money by, you know, doing as much recycling at home. Also, let's see, highway department, winter storms, dot, dot, none. That was.
Tonight.
That was at five o'clock. So they've been maintaining winter equipment, assisting the water department with a water main break on Riverview Road.
Yes, we did. It was up at that, up the street. I never lost my water.
Repair, replace sidewalks and two driveway aprons on East Clinton Avenue. Installing new signs as per the traffic committee and filling potters. Okay, yes, I'll save this one. This is about food waste and what happens, what the possible things are. We'll treat that next time. I didn't see anything from the water department.
I didn't either, I don't think.
Okay, there was no water this month, this Sunday. No problem.
Water main brick.
Okay, right.
I forgot my water.
Right.
Fifty silver?
That's all, that's it.
Nothing, nothing from my game.
Okay, well, now that the holiday season's over, we start budget season.
Excellent.
Oh, Christmas tree. Hey, you remind, Christmas trees, you can recycle Christmas trees.
Put them out.
Yeah, put them out, no plastic bags, no plastic bags, no ornaments, no tinsel.
Not tinsel.
No tinsel, no lights, no sewage, no. Okay.
Budget season's starting.
And, and that's right. So department heads have their work papers, and they're working on them now. And the plan is to come back to you really at the next meeting and give you a budget overview as to how things are looking with the various components that we're aware of, such as medical, retirement system, debt service, and some of the requests of the department heads. And looking into February, we'll be having departmental meetings.
Excellent.
Good report. I'm happy to report that the planning board and final subdivision approval last night came in lots. Okay, we should be ready to get its parcel. We'll have to, you know, over the next couple of weeks, I'll make sure that everything's found right at the county and village will, I think it's ninety thousand dollars, it won't be a lot wrong, it should happen, you know. There's, there's no wishes going forward, the law's happening now, so.
Take your scrounge.
Yeah, good for us.
Does it mean a fair report?
I could report on every project that we have going on.
Why?
That'd be great.
I told Larry that we'd be down by nine-ten tonight. Fifteen. You're the filibuster.
No, very quickly, I'm happy to report, as the board is aware, that the building permits were issued for six of the affordable, six affordable units at the Marker Ridge project, which we affectionately refer to as the Donardo project at thirty, forty South.
Marker Ridge?
Marker Ridge, yeah.
It was the marker down on something. Who knows Marker Ridge?
It's going on the paperwork that I saw.
And he showed me the reason why. It's because of the Ben Franklin mile marker that is part of his fence.
He's gonna knock it down, I heard.
Not a time for jokes, Mr. Mayor.
He's selling it.
Not a time for jokes.
So fortunately, that gave us a, a dot on the map with respect to the county settlement. Took, you know, better part of the entire settlement to do it, but we got there and it took a lot of work on everyone's part.
We can't be embarrassed, like the two communities that did not come to bear fruit.
Look, there are lots of reasons why things happen, but that's, it's not so easy, but as we know. A lot of, you know, a lot of paths we went down that didn't pan out, so.
I greatly appreciate everybody who worked on that. A lot of work from a lot of people. And I think it's a very worthy goal, and I'm glad those building permits have been issued and we'll have some affordable housing.
It's great. Sixty-nine units. It's great.
And protect that house, John Stone's house. So I needed to ask you, and I can just ask you now, this is not meant to be a needle or anything, but I just want to, are we, there used to be a list of open, opened items from the various meetings, not the projects list. Or is that still being maintained?
Yeah, there's not very much that carries over from meeting to meeting. Last one I can think of is that county request, but I, beyond that, no.
Okay, so everything else is in the projects, yeah. So the other thing that came up, Connie and I were talking about, I guess, maybe. I'm just trying to think about who I was.
And I want to know if we're.
Yeah. We had talked about a, we had a statement that we made as a, as a board that sort of echoed some of what the governor had said in terms about our.
Not.
Tolerance.
Yeah, not, not.
I forgot the exact wording of it, it was a tolerance. And we talked about getting that on the web site. Did I get it up yet?
I don't think so.
Okay, so I would just like to put that as, we talked about trying to put up both a link to the mayor, to the governors, but also put ours, it'd be nice to put it in a place where it was sealed rather than like a clear link that doesn't maybe age off so quickly, if you could.
That'd be great. Which is great, well, public comment, then review passing items, I think we passed that.
Yeah, that's. And then adjournment.
So no other follow-ups?
I can't think of any real follow-ups. Did you? I'll talk to you offline about that one, I think. I saw that the, the radar signs were back functioning, so that's great. Was there an issue with those?
Yeah, all the cars, bad, all the.
I did notice something, are they set to blink a white light too at a certain percentage, like five?
It's a, the numbers flash from fifteen, from sixteen to twenty, and then over twenty, the truck flashes as well.
And on Harriman, it would be from twenty-five to thirty. I noticed one thing that's happening, and I'm sure, I just wanted to mention it to you because this is like a really quirky thing. When it counts up to seventeen, you're back again, like if you're, like, at least I see it on the one that I, on Harriman. And then I saw it once on Main Street. It's like a single, a single segment of what would be part of seventeen flashes. And then it starts like counting in a different direction. It's just weird. If you watch it, no cars nearby, you'll catch it. And I wonder if it's a Sanford letter or something. It's nothing you can do about it, but it's something that.
I'll, I'll look at.
It repeats at seventeen. All the time, so that's why I feel like it's a weird bug.
We're deferring to your mayoral presence.
Do you have any other questions? Because if we have, we got three more minutes of questions, that should be good. Motion to adjourn?